Okay. I think we're ready to begin, so I'll call to order. Regular council meeting of October 13th, 2020. Begin tonight with a call to order and roll call. No, we'll start with the invocation, I'm sorry. Invocation by Pastor Thor Stranholt from Valor Christian Center. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for the invitation. It's so nice to be with everybody, mask to mask. You know, this is an awkward time that our country is going through, and we are going through it. And a friend of mine wrote a comment here. He says, "A crisis is simply an invitation to a miracle. Don't give up. Your miracle is on the way." In 2 Timothy 1:7, God says, "I have not given you the spirit of fear, but love, power, and a sound mind." So we don't need to live in fear. We need to live in wisdom and knowledge, so that we know what the right thing to do is. Father, tonight, I just pray for this meeting. I thank you, Lord, that all the decisions that will be made tonight will be made in consideration of what you would have them to do. I thank you, Lord, you give them wisdom beyond their years in making all the decisions that concern our community, our businesses, and all those involved. And Father God, we'll be careful to give you all the praise, all the honor, and all the glory for it. And it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. And amen. Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to your car show. The Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Councilmember Spence, I think you're coordinating that?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Liberty Wyatt. She's a fifth grader from Edge Prize Gilbert. She's been a Girl Scout for five years. She's passionate about helping endangered animals and has adopted five orphaned elephants in Kenya. She is currently working on earning her Inside Government Badge. I had the pleasure of meeting Liberty this last week, and truly an inspirational young woman. And I asked her to come and do the pledge for us, so I'm very thankful. Liberty received -- Liberty recently learned from Councilmember Bill Spence that a good leader doesn't push people, but guides them in the right direction. Because if you push people, they only push back and you'll go nowhere. There's a little exercise behind that that we were taking a look at. Liberty, the floor is yours. Thank you so much.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Liberty. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Liberty. Roll call.
Mayor Scott Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Young Kaprowski?
Here.
Councilmember Scott September?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Spence?
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke?
Here.
And Councilmember Amy Yentz?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. I've kind of bounced around on the agenda tonight, but we do have a couple of proclamations. We'll begin with our proclamation for Veterans Week in Gilbert. Councilmember Spence will be doing that.
We're bouncing around.
Do we have the proclamation? Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me okay? Okay. First of all, I'm foregoing the purple masks today, just in honor of the Navy's 245th birthday, that happens to be today. So I think it's appropriate that we are doing this proclamation for Veterans Week today. I'd like to invite our members from the Veterans Military Advisory Panel who have come down. Les, who do we have? And Jim Victor.
Okay. So proclamation, Veterans Week in Gilbert, Arizona. Whereas Veterans Day, November 11th, is set aside annually for celebrating our military veterans and was begun as a commemoration of the end of hostilities of World War I, which went into effect on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. And whereas November 11th marks a day to honor Americans veterans for their patriotism, love of country, and willingness to serve and sacrifice for the common good. And whereas, like the heroes before them, today a new generation of men and women are fighting for freedom around the globe. And whereas, in honoring our veterans, we also wish to remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice, laying down their lives that we may live in freedom. And whereas, long after leaving the uniform behind, many veterans continue to serve our country as public servants, mentors, parents, and community leaders. And whereas, as we honor our veterans with ceremonies on this day, let our actions strengthen the bond between the nation and her warriors. And whereas, on Veterans Day, we pay tribute to the service and sacrifice of the men and women who, in defense of our freedom, have bravely worn the uniform of the United States. Every soldier, sailor, airman, marine, coast guardsmen has earned the lasting gratitude of the American people. Now therefore, I, Scott Anderson, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of November 9th, 2020, as Veterans Week in Gilbert, Arizona.
Les, would you please come up?
I'd like to introduce -- I'd like to introduce Les Presnick, Chairman of our Veterans Military Advisory Board. Les, please come.
I guess so. I thank you, Councilmember Spence. Thank you, Mayor Anderson and the rest of the council. Also want to thank some of the members of both our Veterans Day Committee that have served for many years, as well as another member of our new Veterans and Military Advisory Board. Veterans Day is a great event. I want to invite everybody to come out, but recognize that there's unfortunately going to be a limit to the number of people even that we can handle, even at the new regional park. So get registered early. But I really want to thank all of our veterans, those who have served to protect the freedoms that we hold so dear. How many would -- all of our veterans, please stand and be recognized? Thank you. And thank you.
Yeah, I'll find the handshelter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second proclamation will be done by Councilmember Tilke.
Good evening. I'm going to take my mask off when I read this, because I'm really soft spoken and you won't be able to hear me. October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I wanted to ask to join me several members of our Gilbert Police Department who are involved in our different areas. And if you'll come up and join me, as you come up, I believe that's Brenda, Keith, Chris, and Tim. I wanted to share just a little bit of information. Here in Gilbert, we have recognized this month every year to bring attention to this problem that impacts our community, with the Gilbert Police Department Family Violence Unit and Counseling Department leading the efforts. This year, the COVID-19 pandemic has led to increased domestic violence incidents nationwide, with more people having no choice but to spend a significant more time at home. Gilbert was not exempt in seeing a spike in DV-related calls compared to the same time last year. Forty percent of our DV-related incidents are between 26 and 37 years of age. The nature of these calls was also different, with an increase in the intensity of the DV crimes. Remember, domestic violence can happen to anyone, regardless of race, ethnicity, education level, religion, gender, or age. So please check with your loved ones, even if you're unable to see them in person. And I was at a meeting yesterday, and I found it interesting that, actually, it was a former councilman, Eddie Cook, who has been a champion of the efforts we have here in Gilbert. But when he mentioned that his family has not had any indication of domestic violence at all in their family, I was surprised, because I know that I can look out, and most everybody in this room has had someone within their family or their friends impacted by this. And so I'm just so proud of your efforts and proud of what Gilbert's doing to address this problem. Before I have you introduce yourselves, I'll read the proclamation. Thank you. Whereas, domestic violence is a serious crime affecting over four million Americans each year, of all races, ages, gender, and income levels. And whereas, one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence. And whereas, children that grow up in violent homes are abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas, domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and nonproductivity. And whereas, Gilbert has dedicated family violence officers, police counselors, and victim advocates serving, saving lives every day. And whereas, only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas, Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. Now therefore, I, Scott Anderson, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Gilbert, Arizona, and urge our citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. And I'd like to thank all of our council members who took the time to wear purple today to acknowledge this month. And Monica, thank you for the purple face mask. And with that, I want to turn it over and have you all introduce yourselves. If you want to share maybe something very short about what you do. Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Keith Bradshaw. I'm the Counseling Manager for Gilbert Police Department. And it's our pleasure to promote this month as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which started in 1981 as an awareness day, where advocates came together to foster more awareness. And it slowly evolved from a day to a few weeks, and finally to a month in 1989. And we're proud to be a part of the Town of Gilbert, who is promoting this in the community. We have several events planned for this month in order to raise awareness. And we've been able to put together a committee of about 25 members from both officers and employees of the Town of Gilbert, as well as outside agencies that have all come together and helped join us in establishing some of these things that we're going to do for promoting it. So it's a pleasure to be here.
Hi, everybody. My name is Brenda Karasco. I am part of the Digital Government Team assigned to the Gilbert Police Department. And for the last couple of weeks, we've been putting out content on our social media platforms. So if you don't already follow us, make sure you follow the Gilbert Police Department and the town channels, where we will be inviting you to participate in wearing purple on Wednesdays. And you can find a lot of other information in relation to Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And it's my first year on this committee, and I'm very proud to be able to work with these amazing people who just want to make a difference here in Gilbert.
My name is Chris Wood. I'm a detective with our Family Violence Unit, and I kind of assist by assisting victims, investigating their cases, and prosecuting the offenders. And I wanted to thank you for this proclamation.
Hello, my name is Tim Brown. I'm the Sergeant over the Family Violence Unit. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to have this proclamation, Town Council for seeing us this evening, and for you in the community who are willing to get some information and to be able to share information for loved ones, check on those loved ones. And so hopefully, we can reduce these crimes of domestic violence here in the Town of Gilbert. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'll do the photo.
Thank you to all of you. I know this is a former councilmember Peterson's favorite day, getting to wear purple. Thank you all. Let's move to communications from citizens.
The communications from citizens portion of the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government that are not on the printed agenda. We really value our citizen comments and input. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. We ask that, when your name is called, you come forward to the podium, state your name and place of residence, and then begin speaking. You will have three minutes. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. Our first speaker tonight will be Dora Lys Machado-Liddell.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Dora Lys Machado-Liddell. I'm a Gilbert resident. Speaking here about the design guidelines that have been discussed throughout the 30-year Heritage District redevelopment history, private property owners have been living with the threat of imminent domain condemnation and uncertainty about their private property rights. The town may claim that they've never or rarely used condemnation. However, if you read the Redevelopment Commission and Town Council minutes dating back to 1989, you may find tactics used to acquire property in instances where it took place. One property owner that comes to mind is Mike's Iron Shop in 2001. The current Heritage District Design Guidelines clearly state the use of the word "shall" and "must" have been purposely avoided within the specific guidelines. If further states it establishes Town of Gilbert Suggested Principles for Designing Quality Downtown Development. The town staff has stated that they have created a comparison of the 2010 versus 2020 guidelines to demonstrate that very minor changes have been made to the Lacy Track requirements. I do not believe that making the design guidelines a mandatory legal requirement is a minor change. This change affects my private property rights. I did not purchase my property with mandatory design guidelines, with the Governmental Homeowners Association, with the requirement that I submit my custom building plans to the Design Review Commission or the Redevelopment Commission. Once the area is no longer under the state redevelopment laws, the design guidelines will still be in effect. Once again, this affects my private property rights. My private property rights are being treated differently based on my zip code. Such actions represent a discriminatory use of the Land Development Code, and the design guidelines is the avenue in which it takes place. I ask the town not to pass an ordinance that in any way violates the voter-approved 2006 Private Property Rights Protection Act. I also request that all deliberations be held in a public setting in the spirit of government transparency. I believe that the design guidelines, if passed, will have a far-reaching effect on all property owners that live in Gilbert without a homeowners association, aging properties, especially residential properties in the northwest growth area. In closing, I ask the design guidelines remain just that, a suggested guideline. I thank you for allowing me to speak, and I also thank you for supporting our law enforcement throughout the whole process. And I support veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Dora Lys. Our next speaker will be Victor Romero. Please state your name and place of residence, and then begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Victor Romero. I've been a resident of Gilbert for the past 10 years. And as I notice, Gilbert is celebrating its centennial, 100 years. I can't help but to think to myself how much in the last 100 years has really changed as far as the way things go. And I'm here to address the elephant in the room, actually, the elephant on the intersection, multiple intersections on multiple times a day, where simple gatherings that were meant to be supportive of the police and police lives, and the hard work that law enforcement does for communities, has turned into a sort of supremacist gathering and a bit of hate rallies on every corner. And I know that Gilbert, Arizona, has been the -- has a reputation as one of the safest towns in the country. But you can't help but to wonder how long their reputation will last, seeing as about every other day on different multiple street corners, you see people gathering, displaying Confederate flags and other symbols of hate throughout the town. And I'm not here really to list any demands, because the demands have been spoken about for weeks now at this point, not just in Gilbert, but in multiple cities throughout the valley. And I just want the council to know that this must be nipped in the bud. This condemnation must come soon. And I know you do not want to make political comments, but we cannot watch as our town slowly becomes something that nobody would like to see with this hate and the way people gather on corners and ride their trucks by. And we can't act like we didn't see it coming. So I just hope that soon, the Town of Gilbert, the Council of Gilbert, and all residents come together to work together and also condemn the hate that we're seeing in our town. And let me see if I didn't really have anything written, but... Yes, I mean, at this point, the attention that's been being given to Gilbert is out of everybody in this room's hands. It's now reaching national attention. So at this point, the entire country is aware of what's going on on Gilbert street corners. But it is your job now to let the nation know, in such a crucial time in our country, what is being done about it, and are citizens' concerns being listened to, and where do we move forward from there? Thank you. And my name is Victor Romero. That is my name. My identity is out there. I was unlawfully arrested by Phoenix PD for peacefully protesting. My face and my mug shots are on the news, despite the multiple death threats I get a day by other citizens and residents. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Victor. That concludes the communication from citizens. We'll move to the consent calendar. We'll be pulling items number one. And we'll also be bringing forward item number 35. May I have a motion to approve items 2, 3, 3A, 3B, 3C, 3D, 3E, and items 4 through 25?
So moved. Second?
All in favor? Please vote.
I don't know. I think this one's mine.
That passes 7-0. We'll take item 1 for discussion.
Mayor Anderson, excuse me. You had brought forward item number 35, which is the appointment.
Yes.
Can we have a new motion on that one to name who the appointees will be?
Definitely. Thank you. Could we have a motion on item 35?
Yes, I will make a motion to appoint Maisha Hagan to the Redevelopment Commission with a term beginning November 1, 2020, and ending October 31, 2024, which is a full term. And Casey Kendall to the Redevelopment Commission with a term beginning November 1, 2020, and ending October 31, 2021, which is a partial term.
Second.
Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. We'll now take discussion from council members on item number 1.
Mayor, I asked to have this one pulled. I won't be long on this. I've talked plenty of times on my concerns relative to some of the HUD funds here. I do believe we have sufficient inventory for this need in the town, number one. Number two, we do have residents that are concerned about subsidized low-income housing that's growing in the neighborhoods, and they're worried about their property values as we continue to buy more homes that are not taken care of at the same level of quality as the others in those homes. And so I'm not going to be supporting this on those concerns and others I've expressed. But thank you. So at this point, the entire country is aware of what's going on on Gilbert street corners. But it is your job now to let the nation know in such a crucial time in our country what is being done about it and are citizens' concerns being listened to? And where do we move forward from there? Thank you. And my name is Victor Romero. That is my name. My identity is out there. I was unlawfully arrested by Phoenix PD for peacefully protesting. My face and my mug shots are on the news, despite the multiple death threats I get a day by other citizens and residents. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Victor. That concludes the communication from citizens. We'll move to the consent calendar. We'll be pulling items number one. And we'll also be bringing forward item number 35. May I have a motion to approve items 2, 3, 3A, 3B, 3C, 3D, 3E, and items 4 through 25?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please vote.
I don't know. I think this one's mine.
That passes 7-0. We'll take item 1 for discussion.
Mayor Anderson, excuse me. You had brought forward item number 35, which is the appointment. Can we have a new motion on that one to name who the appointees will be?
Definitely. Thank you. Could we have a motion on item 35?
Yes, I will make a motion to appoint Maisha Hagan to the Redevelopment Commission with a term beginning November 1, 2020, and ending October 31, 2024, which is a full term, and Casey Kendall to the Redevelopment Commission with a term beginning November 1, 2020, and ending October 31, 2021, which is a partial term.
Second.
Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. We'll now take discussion from council members on item number 1.
Mayor, I asked to have this one pulled. I won't be long on this. I've talked plenty of times on my concerns relative to some of the HUD funds here. I do believe we have sufficient inventory for this need in the town, number 1. Number 2, we do have residents that are concerned about subsidized low-income housing that's growing in the neighborhoods. And they're worried about their property values as we continue to buy more homes that are not taken care of at the same level of quality as the others in those homes. And so I'm not going to be supporting this on those concerns and others I've expressed. But thank you for the time to add my comments here.
Are there any further comments on this item? Maybe you have a motion for item number 1?
I'll make a motion to approve. Sorry.
Do we have a second?
Second.
The item passes 5-2. And that concludes our consent calendar. Mayor Anderson.
Thank you. We'll move on to our public hearing section. In our public hearings, I do know that we would probably want to consider separately items 26, 30, and 32. We do have some discussion on those. Does anyone have any others that they'd like to remove for discussion in the public hearing?
Mayor, if I may, 27.
Can I get a motion then to approve items 28, 29, and 31?
So moved.
Mayor, if I may, could we open and close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I'll open the public hearing on items 27, or 28, 29, and 31, and close the public hearing. Now a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We'll consider item number 26 in a public hearing. Consider possible approval of a Series 10 beer and wine store liquor alcohol license for Joey's Smoke Shop. The reason we have pulled this one off is we received a recommendation from our police department to not send a recommendation to the State Liquor Board to approve this item, and I entertain any discussion from the council on this item. I don't know if we have an applicant here tonight. We definitely want to give you the opportunity to speak. So if you'd come forward. State your name, place of city of residence, and we'll go from there with your discussion.
Hi, my name is Christopher Robin. My city of residence is Scottsdale, Arizona. And I just want to start by thanking the council board for giving me an opportunity to speak to you today. I wanted to go ahead and read the amendment to question number 14 of the questionnaire. This was sent in to the Liquor Board prior to this meeting. And this kind of explains more on the incident. The incident stems from more of a simply stated wrong place at the wrong time situation in which I received no charges, was released from jail, and was given back all personal property taken at the scene of the incident. To give a better description, on September 8, 2019, a friend and I were invited to another friend's house. When we arrived, the owner of the home wasn't there yet. However, sorry. However, the security PIN given to us by her to the home... Sorry. When we arrived, the owner of the home wasn't there yet. However, we did have the security PIN given to us from the homeowner to disable the alarm. Although we did disable the alarm, for some reason, something triggered the alarm to go off prior to us attempting the code. Basically, at that point, the security company tried to reach the homeowner, and the owner didn't respond, so the security company dispatched the police. This was the main purpose that the police were dispatched to the scene, a flawed alarm. After being in the home for around 10 minutes, the police came to the door, asked for the owner, where we informed them that she is yet to arrive. While waiting for her to arrive, my friend and I were placed in police cruisers and were taken into custody. After a brief detainment, I was released without bill. I was not prosecuted or charged in any manner related to the incident stemming from September 8, 2019, nor have I ever been involved with anything criminal in my past. I ask that the council board take into consideration my clean past and the fact that I currently own eight businesses and employ 20 employees, two of which are my own parents, and I've worked hard my whole life to get to this point. I would never jeopardize my future over something that would hurt my family, my employees, or their family, for that matter. I hope that you look past this incident and allow me to continue to grow and help my family and others. I don't believe that being at the wrong place at the wrong time should define my future, and I don't plan on letting it do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you. Questions from council for the applicant? Yes, Vice Mayor.
May I ask the purpose of requesting for an application for the type of store that you own?
I own a smoke shop right now, and I'm requesting a beer and wine license to expand my business and to be able to grow the business.
Other questions?
Councilman Taylor?
I don't have questions for the applicant, but I did maybe for our town manager, did the police in giving their input to council have access to the information that we just heard as well? And did that change anything?
Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Taylor, we do have Chief Solberg. We're trying to get him switched over to a panelist right now so he can speak to the matters that the applicant has referenced.
Okay. Mayor, I'm just asking because if that changes their opinion, then that might be good information for us if this is new for them as well. But if they've already heard that and still stand with their position, then that's important for us to know. If I may also just, maybe a procedural question to our town attorney. If we wanted to move where we... Do we need to do a motion to not recommend if that's the will of the council? Do you need that? Or is it more of a no action? What procedurally would we need to do tonight?
Mayor, council members, it would be a motion to not recommend. And then, yeah, but the Liquor Board has the final say. At the end of the day, even with the no recommendation, the Liquor Board could approve it or not approve it. It's totally within their discretion, but they do listen to what council members have to say.
It's my understanding that if we do not recommend in favor, we have to have specific reasons stated for the board so they understand our reasons for that.
That's correct, Mayor.
Mayor, if I may, ask a follow-up. Chris, if the Liquor Board denies the application, do you have any idea the time period it would take? If he wanted to reapply, would it be a year or two? I don't know if you know that or not.
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, I don't know that. I'd have to look that up.
Okay. Mayor, sometimes in these situations where maybe it just needs some time to sort out, sometimes no action from us is appropriate because maybe a year to come back and apply. But if we do a no recommendation and the State Liquor Board upholds that, there may be a five-year time period before he can come back. I don't know if we have all that information tonight, but sometimes there's provisions about how long it takes for them to reapply and depending on what we want to do here.
I'm guessing a lot of that might depend on the information we get from Chief Solberg or from the department.
Maybe we wait till he patches in and we bring it back up or something.
Mayor, may I ask the applicant a question?
Yes, Councilmember Yentes.
It's Joey, correct?
It's Chris.
How long have you operated this business on Gilbert Road?
Since 2016.
I'm sorry, it's very hard.
Since 2016.
16?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And obviously, for a smoke shop, there's certain licensure requirements to operate that sort of business as well. Have you had any issues in maintaining the legitimacy of your licensures for your current business since 2016?
No, I have not. Everything is current on the business.
Chris, if we want to not take action tonight, if we can't get a hold of Chief Solberg, would it be appropriate to postpone this until another time?
We could do that, but I understand that he is on now.
Okay. Chief Solberg.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
We're discussing... Well, you know what we're discussing, so. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Mayor, I'd be happy to move to continue this to November 10 if we think we just need a little bit of time to sort out some of the things and then we can take some action from there.
It's probably... I think that's probably appropriate because it's very rare that we take any negative action on these types of requests. And I think it has to be for very specific reasons. And if that's something that he has presented tonight and maybe the police department wasn't aware of, it could affect at least how I feel about it.
And some of the state agencies will prohibit him for a very long time if there's a no recommendation and they uphold that versus if it's something to get sorted out. Just give some time on that.
Mayor, may I ask a question maybe for Patrick or whoever else would be appropriate? Are there other smoke shops operating in town currently that have liquor licenses?
Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Yentes, I am not sure, but I could come back to the council with that information.
And then maybe a follow-up question for Chris. I don't know how familiar you are with the state board's requirements, but do they have questions of moral perpetuity when they take into account, I assume they do, for approving or denying a licensure?
Mayor, Councilmember Yentes, I am not sure. I haven't ever reviewed those rules. I'd have to look that up.
I would be comfortable approving this knowing that we're just a recommending body, given the information that we've heard tonight. The rest of the council is comfortable moving that forward as well. Since there is another layer of government that's going to take a look at this, and I would assume, but maybe if it's more appropriate to find out what their process is and ensure that they're... But it's pretty difficult to get liquor licenses, and you have to pay and have to provide a lot of documentation. So I'm comfortable with that, but if the rest of the council is as well.
Mayor, my preference is to continue to November 10. Let a couple of these details sort out, and then we'll be able to... But I'd love to hear what other people think.
Mayor, I have to agree with Councilman Taylor on this. One of the words I hear, and I may have missed it in your dialogue, that these criminal charges have not been adjudicated yet. And I would feel more comfortable allowing some more information to come out and at least semblance of due process before we do a decision that could impact you for... So I'd agree with Councilmember Taylor with postponing until the next meeting.
If I may state one more thing. You know, I do want to state the fact that this did happen on September 8 of last year. And since that time, I have been, like I stated, I have been given all my property back. No charges have been brought against me, and I haven't been brought to a judge or anything. I haven't been charged of anything. So I did just want to state that. And if it is moved to another date, I do have a copy of the amendment to the question 14 of the questionnaire that I did send to the Liquor Board that I can give to everybody, if that's okay with you.
Thank you. That might be appropriate to give that to our staff, and then they could distribute that to us. On that, let's have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone until the November 1st meeting, November 10.
Second.
That passes 7-0. It will be postponed until November 10, and so we'll bring it up again. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Item 27, I think Councilmember Taylor asked for separate consideration on this one.
Yes, Mayor. This has to do with the topic of sampling privileges, which was approved by the legislature a number of years ago, maybe almost 10 years ago. But this is where these privileges are allowed in grocery stores. And I've typically voted against this one just to keep the quality, the family-friendly quality in grocery stores there. And I was joined by Mayor Lewis and former council member Ben Cooper on that to keep that standard in our community. So I wanted to vote separately on that to continue to encourage that standard in our town. Thank you, Mayor.
I opened the public hearing on this. If there's an applicant here, I don't know that there is. Any further discussion with the council? I entertain a motion then.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. That brings us to item 30, which is a zoning case. Consider hearing and consider appeal to the Town Council. Planning Commission's action acting as a design review board on the design review to the Gilbert Christian School. Is the applicant the appellant here? I'll open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? I think I do have a card. Jim DeMarches? See here, says presenting in person on item 30. He's on WebEx? Okay. On WebEx? Okay, let's have him speak. I don't know that... Is he the appellant in this case? Okay. Do we have a staff member here that worked on this item by chance? I'm confused about who is appealing what in his case. Do we have a staff member that's on that could give us... Okay. I'd like to begin with the staff presentation
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Give me a moment while I get my presentation pulled up. It doesn't... I still don't have access to the share content. Okay, can you see my presentation now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So this is AP 2002. It's an appeal of DR 1625B. This is Gilbert Christian Schools and their Titan Solar Field. This was heard by the Planning Commission on Aug... This was heard by the Planning Commission on August 5th of this year. As you can see on the vicinity map shown on the screen, it's located on the east side of Greenfield Road. This is between Queen Creek Road and Jermaine Road, about, about halfway. You can see East Ryan Road bounds the property on the south. Gilbert Christian School is looking to expand that field into the area that's shown with the red hash. Their existing campus, you can see on this aerial is constructed and then the expansion area again is with that red hash area. So the Planning Commission, as I mentioned, did recommend approval of this and we are asking the town council to conduct a hearing to consider an appeal of that approval. For Gilbert Christian Schools Titan Solar Field, it is on approximately 11.1 gross acres and located at the northeast corner of Greenfield and Ryan Road. It is zoned, a single-family, 43, so it is residential property. School facilities are allowed in this zoning district. The town council has the options this evening to uphold the approval, modify the approval or conditions, or reverse the decision of the Planning Commission slash Design Review Board. So as I mentioned, this design review looked at the expansion of the Gilbert Christian School campus by adding 1.32 acres to the site for a total of 11.01 gross acres. The overall Gilbert Christian School site is outlined in red, was approved in 2016. The 2016 approval included the baseball field. It did have a slightly different configuration with a smaller outfield. And with the exception of this ball field, as you saw on the aerial, the campus itself is built out. The scope of work for this project is this area outlined in blue and it includes again that expansion area of this parcel. So looking at the baseball field specifically, you can see that the outfield extends into the parcel on the east. The red line shown in this location depicts the perimeter wall. This is intended to be an eight-foot wall that will match the CMU wall that exists for Gilbert Christian School and it will be painted to match. This wall is set inside the property boundary. There is an access easement that runs along the north of that property boundary and then down the east side granting access to this property owner down here. And then another item to point out, this dashed fence here is a mobile sports fence, as you can see on the picture, that will be rolled out to kind of delineate the outfield of the, of the field when games are played. Another item to point out on the site plan is that there is a 20-foot utility easement that runs north, north-south along the western 20 feet of the parcel addition, located in this area here, if you can see my laser. Within this easement is a private water service line that serves two properties to the north. Those properties currently have a water meter located on Greenfield Road. It runs east along Ryan Road and then up north through the site to connect to those properties. This is a private easement, not a public utility easement. The Planning Commission, as I have previously mentioned, did recommend approval with a five-to-do vote with three conditions of approval. These are in your staff report and shown on the screen here, so we can come back to these if needed. On August 17th, there was an appeal filed by one of the property owners north of this site that her water line runs through that easement that I mentioned. As, so I was going to take just a couple of moments to run through the grounds for appeal submitted in her filing and just respond to those, so. It was indicated on the application that the applicant was Gilbert Christian School. The landowner is Dolores Lopez and a question of whether or not the appropriate party had signed the application. The application was signed actually by both Dolores Lopez and the applicant Gilbert Christian Schools. There was a question of whether or not the easement holders had signed the application and that is not a requirement as these are private agreements. In early conversations with Ms. Lopez, I had indicated that staff was requesting an ALTA survey. So part of the appeal filing was asking whether or not an ALTA was submitted. It was submitted, though not required by the town. As part of our application, we did request one. Just knowing the unique nature of this parcel, access issues and easement issues, so we did get a copy of the ALTA and reviewed it against the proposal. There was also a question as part of the appeal filing on the site plan and whether or not it properly identified streets, easements, power poles. All of these items were appropriately depicted on the site plan. She noted that the landscape plan was not shown or did not show the SRP power poles. Those power poles are depicted on the site plans under keynotes O2-002 and O2-005. There was also a question of whether or not the appropriate neighborhood notice was complete and we did verify that the applicant provided a required list of property owners within 300 feet and HOAs within 1,000 feet and they submitted to staff an affidavit of those mailings. She questioned whether or not property owners outside of those 300 feet were notified and they were not as, as, they are not required to be notified. And then finally, there was question on whether or not permission from the easement holders had been received and the applicant is required to coordinate with easement holders. These are private agreements and so we don't, as part of our design review process, require that those easement holders sign off on the applications. And so that, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the town council may have. Mrs. Lopez is available and has a presentation as well that she would like to run through.
Thank you, Ashley. Questions for staff?
I have a question, Mayor. Ashley, thanks for that presentation and kind of a breakdown of the, the appeal. When it comes to the public notice piece, the applicant simply fill out an affidavit. Is there anything legally binding about the affidavit?
Councilmember September, so what we require is that the applicant provide to us a list of who they have mailed their notices to and then they sign a notarized copy affirming that they, that they did that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll invite the applicant, which I assume is Dolores. Is she online? Are you there, Dolores?
Ashley, could you give us some assistance on who should be presenting? Is it Mr. DeMarcey?
Gina Lopez is the appellant.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will, Gina, I will give you presenter privileges again. Gina, are you there? Ms. Lopez? Ms. Lopez, it seems that you are unmuted now.
At my understanding, this is the appellant, not the original applicant. Is that correct?
Mayor, that is correct.
Do we have the original applicant anywhere?
Mayor, Mr. Jim DeMarcey is the original applicant.
Okay. Nancy Davidson, would you like to add any more confusion to this?
Yes, I, I'm hoping, I see Gina Lopez is trying to connect.
Yes, Gina, we can see you.
Gina, that can, that we're looking at there?
Yes, that appears to be Ms. Lopez. Can you hear us? Yes, okay. It looks like your microphone is on and, and your camera is on, so maybe we can test it out.
Can you hear me now? I joined by phone.
Yes, we can hear you, Gina.
Okay, can I share my screen to start a PowerPoint?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council. So, as I said, my name is Gina Lopez and I am the property owner to the far north of the project for this ball field. And I am just shy of the 300 feet for the notification. When I completed this appeal and had to do the mailings myself, I was quite surprised that I was not on the list. However, my house is directly impacted from this ball field project because of course the easement runs through there and I am truly one of the very close neighbors. Through my PowerPoint, I'm going to talk through a couple of different issues that are currently unresolved and kind of tie it up with the communication efforts that have gone on between the builder of the project and myself as the property owner along with the Town of Gilbert and the Cadiz Housing Development that's right there as well. So please bear with me. I'm going to try to get through this as quickly as possible. So the history here, if you can see the screen.
We can't see your PowerPoint, Gina.
You can't? Okay, you're starting, you're sharing, start. Let's see, how do I? Ashley, do you have possibly how I can share this?
Gina, there, do you see the bar along the bottom? It's next to mute, start video, and then there's a share.
Share my screen. I think I got it. Did that work?
Yes, we can see the PowerPoint now.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So the first screen here shows a Maricopa County plot map that was back in 2007 that shows ultimately the highlighted yellow area is where the school is today. A long time ago, those were, those were plotted for houses and in 2000, somewhere between 2007 and now, the guy that owned those acres there wanted to put in an arena rodeo and that was not approved by the Town of Gilbert because it, it truly impacted our, meaning the surrounding homeowners, people that live here, our tranquility and our peace and, and quiet nature of enjoying our home. So fast forward, now it's a school, okay? Not a problem. It's zoned, commercial, not a problem. The, the question is, is this design review that's been put forward, the application that's been put forward, is expanding a commercial project into a residential zoned area? So it's trying to take over an acre that is set to be a house. It's zoned for a house. And it truly does impact our neighborhood field. And that's what I'm going to get to on my next screen. So please bear with my color crayons. That's, that's what I have. I am not an artist nor a computer designer or anything of that, but I had paper and I had crayons from my nine-year-old. Right now, there's two houses currently there that we live in, us and the Bryce family. There's an empty acre that is the proposed red area that Ashley spoke about and then there's another house. So in a five-acre stretch, there are four houses that is not ran by an HOA. It is historically the old-fashioned farmland and it has private easements, it has private water lines, there's private wells and historically this land that I'm speaking of right now has been landlocked and the houses even behind us are currently struggling to get water. They're struggling to get electricity and they have ultimately houses, the massive million-dollar house has sat there for 10 years unbuildable that is just now finally being able to be built. So that's why my discussion of the easements and the water line is so crucial. This is what we're wanting to do with this application. We're wanting to make it a not a normal neighborhood. We're going to lose value. We're going to have loss of connection. They're going to put brick walls, eight-foot brick walls in between two homes. So we no longer can walk in a straight line from one house down to the next house. We have to go around a brick wall. That's a baseball field. It takes the neighborhood deal away completely. I'm going back to the zoning question, right? Currently, the land is zoned as a family. It's not SR 35 anymore, it's SR 43. Sorry, I got that wrong. But ultimately, the fact is the same. It's zoned for a house. It's zoned for a neighborhood. And we didn't have to have a zoning change because schools, I guess, have special rules. Schools are not required to go through certain things and that's why this has avoided the rezoning of that acre parcel from a residential to, or yeah, from residential to commercial. That, that to me is kind of a problem. I don't understand that. So jumping straight into the 20-foot easement. It is a private easement. It is ultimately a public recorded document that was a quick claim deed between property owners. I don't understand why on August 5th that ultimately it was kind of a surprise that these, the ingress egress and the utility seem to be overlooked. I don't understand how the impact of the properties to the north, two homes with kids living in there was not discussed or concerned with or worried about. And it seems like the business deal just didn't matter to, to the people in that business deal to, to make those arrangements beforehand, to contact the property owners beforehand. Was it negligence? Did they not understand? Did they not know? I don't know. I, I, I can't speak to that. Was it on purpose because they didn't want the property owners knowing because we would be against it? I don't know that either. I can't speak to that. All I can speak to is when I became aware of it on August 5th, truly aware of the intentions, that's when I, I became heavily involved and I have tried so hard to come to a resolution. And I will go through that and end with a timeline of the communication that I've had with the Town of Gilbert, who has been super helpful, with the Cadiz Housing Development, who's also been super helpful, which is a neighbor to all of this. And then of course, the, the actual applicant, Gilbert Christian School. So I'm going to change my screen. Continued easement talk again. This easement is, should be common knowledge. They're quick claim deeds. They are tied into three different property owners, me being one, the Bryce family being two, and then of course Dolores Lopez who signed the application, number three. She owns the raw land where Bryce and myself own a home that we live in. All of these easements with the public recorded documents were given to the Town of Gilbert in 2002 when we built our home. They were given to the Town of Gilbert in 2007 and then a third time in 2009 when we got our water lines installed due to the very unique nature of our property. So when you look here at this easement, one of the solutions that they were proposing during the first hearing on August 5th was a relocation of the easement. So instead of taking it from the straight line that goes literally across the project, they want to jag it. They want to turn it a 90-degree angle and then they want to turn it again a 90-degree angle. I want, I hope that the council understands that we drive down this easement every, every day. Our family, our friends, the neighbor's family, friends, we, we truly use this road on a regular basis. We walk down this road on a regular basis, including great-grandmas, great-grandpas. Relocating it so it's no longer a straight line, but instead has two 90-degree turns, it, it really is kind of unacceptable. Like, I don't understand how somebody thinks a long-bed crew cab with a trailer, which we do have, can make those turns easy. Or an RV. We have people visit out of state. Or an RV. We have people visit out of state all the time that come down with their RVs that drive on that road to get from our house to our grandmother's house. And they would then be forced to make these turns. This is a hindrance. It actually does not help our property and it causes harm to our property. The next, the next big concern that I have is, is the, there are five acres that butt up to our property and I can show you on a different page where they are. But when we open this easement up to the east side of the land instead of the west, we're actually then giving access to two more property owners. And if they decide to start using that easement, then they can actually have claim to it forever under a prescriptive easement. It only takes 10 years. This lease is set for 10 years and there's talk about it being renewed, which is very likely. I mean, it makes sense to renew the lease after you've spent all this money to put in a ball field. But ultimately, we now, Dolores Lopez now has truly allowed a whole bunch more people to drive on her property than I believe she truly intended. And I think that's a concern that needs to be discussed and looked at before anything can move forward. The next one, topic, the next big topic that I want to talk about is the water line. The water line in itself is a very, very unique situation and it happened in 2007. We originally built our house with a well. The well broke and we went without running water in our house for over a month and a half. We spent many days with the town trying to figure out how we were going to get it. We talked with many different property owners on the different easements. And what we kept running into is the easements didn't exist. Nobody had put them in the plans when they separated these parcels out because it wasn't separated by a master plan community or developer, anything like that. This is old farmland that's been truly cut off and sold piece by piece since the 40s. And part of it is the Lopez family. We truly have subdivided 10 acres into these nine acres and put in easements that we thought would help us. But they, but they didn't help all the way. So, the water line literally runs all the way from Greenfield Road down to the 161st Street and then all the way from 161st Street to my house. It is a PVC pipe that's underground. It is a larger-sized meter to get the water pressure to go all the way from Greenfield Road to my house that was required due to the extenuating circumstance. There was a second line installed separately in 2009 that connected city water to Jenny Lopez's house. Our water line pipe, it runs 700 feet east-west on Ryer and 1,300 feet north-south on 161st Street. It's over 1,500 feet, that's 2,000 feet of PVC pipe that breaks. We fix it at least once a year. The only way we know that we need to fix it is by walking that easement. We walk the easement. We walk where our water line is the entire way. We have to look for water seepage through the dirt in order to know where we have to dig up to repair the water line. We've done this for many, 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 many years. It truly is something that we cherish and we can't take for granted because we've been without water. We know what it's like to not have running water in a house, to not be able to bathe and to not be able to flush the toilets without using a five-gallon bucket. So, I hope you guys can understand my panic that sets in when somebody is threatening my water line. What the idea is right now is to bury the line deeper. To drop it, drop it down below the brick wall. And I've drawn a picture here. So ideally, they're wanting to dig it up. They're wanting to put in 90-degree angles and then re-bury it under the footings of the brick wall, which would then protect it from being broken with the kids running on it, the tractors running on it, the grass, the whatever landscape is, all of that good stuff. But what I think people are not paying attention to is it's going to weaken the rest of the line. It's going to reduce our water pressure in those areas. That is a big concern for us. And I don't, we all in the Town of Gilbert in many conversations and the school don't think that this is the viable option. This is the least of the go-to options. So the second option that was talked about is completely relocating the water lines. And we've been in discussion with that, okay? That is, that is the most viable option. The Town of Gilbert has had many meetings with many different departments that have looked at it, that advised on it, and that has been helping me to prepare for it. I have gotten approvals from different people. I figured out the permitting, how it works. I've worked with Cadiz in getting the tap installed by my house, so this could all move forward. However, my efforts have been, have not panned out because the school and those representing the school have not communicated. They have not communicated. And in the end, most recently, at the very end of September, they resorted to indirect threats, which basically says that if I don't do what they want me to do, meaning withdraw my appeal, then they're going to do whatever they want anyways. And that didn't sit well with me. That was very, very hard to read. And it's highlighted there in yellow. "However, if the above isn't acceptable, we will need to bury the existing line per the current city council-approved design. So please let us know how you wish to proceed." I don't have a choice with that sentence. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next big point I want to bring to the council. They cannot ultimately agree, we can't come to an agreement because there was contingencies. One of the contingencies is that the Bryce family has to also agree. And I can't control them. I am one property owner. I am the one that submitted the appeal. It was silly for both of us to submit the appeal, so I did that. We talked about submitting an appeal for the other option or the other item on this topic. But we didn't. This covered it. This worked. And then the other big thing is liability. The school says that they cannot take the liability to hire the people to do the work, to relocate our water line, to truly move it out from the easement. So it's no longer in the easement. We no longer have to access their easement other than driving on it. But the breakage issue and us walking the water line would be completely dissolved. It would no longer be of topic. But they, but they said that they cannot take the liability or responsibility and they can't hire anybody to do that. So that would be all on me. I would have to take time to find the contractors. I would have to take time to hire the people. I would have to take time to put in all the permits. And they wouldn't pay more than $5,000. So if it does go above $5,000, I then am responsible for that cost. And I have a problem with that. I guess my problem is, is they don't want to take responsibility or have, I'll read it to you. "GCS will not execute any contracts with vendors, nor be responsible for warranting, supervising, permitting, or carrying any liability associated with the work." But yet, they are taking that liability upon themselves when they touch my private water line that runs in the easement that they're trying to build on. When they cut that pipe and put in that 90-degree angle once, twice, a third and a fourth time, they then own that responsibility. So what's the difference? I really don't understand. And nobody has been able to explain it to me. There's been a lack of communication and I will get to that in one second.
Gina, Gina?
Yes.
Do you have, how much more would you say you have to present?
I can actually, I can cut it really short. How about like, like one more minute, two more minutes?
That's great. Thank you.
Okay. So, my previous slide, I don't know how to go back. But ultimately, is truly we are losing the enjoyment of our home because the ball field is allowed to have 170 days of playtime till 10:00 PM at night. That means that we're going to be hearing cheers of crowds. We're going to be hearing the overhead of their speakers. And we're going to have lights that are interrupting our stars almost half of a year, a half of a year. And my kids go to bed at 8:00 PM. They're kids, they're kids. They're in third grade. So ultimately, the 10:00 PM thing doesn't work. Moving on. When we, when they relocate this easement going into Jenny Lopez's house, it's actually on the east side of her house and it's a dead end. She has sheds there, she has stuff there, she has trees there. People can't actually access her property from that point without maneuvering through her backyard. And she has expressly declined this with the large house next door, trying to get access in that area before. So, that is something of concern. And she's elderly and been in the hospital at least six times this year alone. So, her making decisions is very, very questionable. And Dolores Lopez is her financial power attorney. So her signing upon Jenny Lopez is also very, very questionable with regards to fiduciary rights and her taking advantage. Okay, my last slide is the timeline. On May 21st, Ashley and I had a conversation. I expressed my concern over the easements and the water lines. And from May 21st through August 5th, I had zero communication from the school. Nobody reached out and tried to talk to me. On August 5th in the morning, I learned of the meeting. Ashley, when I spoke with her, she was, for lack of a better word, kind of baffled that I was calling because she was under the impression that I was totally okay with this project. Somewhere, somehow, she was led to believe that the properties to the north were good with this, when that was not the case. Same time that morning, Cooper then sent me a generic email, told me that they will keep me informed of what they do with my personal property. I then spoke at the council meeting on the 5th and that is what led to ultimately the condition being added and the vote that transpired. Then on the 11th, I sent an email to Ashley and the people for the ball field. Ashley responded gracefully, "Thank you so much for your timely response." I heard nothing back from the ball field. On the 14th, I sent another email. I heard nothing back again. On the August 17th, I actually finally did the appeal because I had no other choice and I paid $500 out of my pocket. Reiterating, zero attempts to communicate with me from August 6th through the 19th, September 19th, just recently. On September 19th, when I am now forced to actually put the sign in front of their school, when that deadline shows up, is when I finally get a phone call from Cooper, who represents the school, offering to pay the $5,000 to relocate as long as I, one, withdraw my appeal and, two, the Bryce family agrees. We go back and forth for a couple days and ultimately, that's how we end up on the 9/24 email, where he says that if I don't agree to their terms, then they're just going to do what they want and I am stuck. So then on the 25th, I pay the rest of my fees and I put the sign up and I do the mailings and in total, I am out $1,300. I am out literally with my water line at risk and access to and from the neighborhood houses on my street at risk and losing potentially the luxury that I love in Gilbert of having the farm life. That's our history there. And that's being able to go out and see the stars so clear as day, the quietness. I'm losing that and that's why ultimately I filed the appeal. Thank you for hearing me and I apologize for running long. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Town Council.
Thank you. Do we have Jim also there on the line?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Jim, can you keep this brief?
Yes, I'll keep it brief.
Thank you.
It's kind of deceiving what was shared with you. I mean, first of all, understand that we don't own that land, that we are leasing that land from Dolores Lopez, who is Gina's husband's aunt. So they were, and then discussions with Dolores, they knew about what was going on. She'd commented to me about concerns about the water line, which we ensured them that we would take care of that. We would never do anything that would disrupt someone's access to their water. And so clearly, what we submitted as the plan, it's what the Town of Gilbert suggested that we do. So we are complying exactly with what the Town of Gilbert requires. Now that is burying the line and making sure that that part of the line is to code as opposed to what's happening on the rest of the water line. I can't be responsible for the fact that they decided to put in kind of an amateur version of a water line. But we are going to take care of the part that we deal with. So, we're going to make sure that the water flows. What we did attempt to do is try to give her a win with this. Knowing that there's the new subdivision to the west, we offered to give them money toward their water line. So they go directly to a meter that's connected to that new subdivision. Now, we weren't going to do all the work and be responsible for everything because we know in order to do that line, they're going to go down the street, they're going to go into their landscaping, they're going to do all these things to connect the water. And we weren't going to take responsibility for that, but we were going to essentially give them an allowance and say, "Listen, we're going to give you $5,000. We're going to give your neighbor $5,000. You've got $10,000 between the two of you to have this new, fresh line coming to your home." And her response was, "Well, I'm not going to guarantee, you need to pay whatever the cost is going to be." And I said, "Well, part of the deal would be, all right, well then you need to abandon this water easement because you're not going to have water through our baseball field anymore." And she went, "Well, you're going to have to pay more for that. You're going to have to pay extra for that." So it just got to this point where, okay, she's trying to really win on this and make some money on this deal and we're not willing to do that. I guess the expectation is, or the understanding is, hey, we're a private school, so we've got money and we can just send a lot of money to whoever is asking for it. We only have money from tuition. So I have to go to my Gilbert Christian parents and ask them to donate toward this. So, we don't, we're not that wealthy school that sometimes people think we are. We're just trying to do the best we can for the families that come to Gilbert Christian, which are Gilbert families. And we're trying to be a blessing to them and we're just trying to extend a baseball field. We've been a blessing to Gina's aunt by paying her rent, even though we haven't even used the land yet. We've been paying her for three years. So, I mean, we're trying to be great neighbors to everyone who's there and try to take care of them. We would never do anything that's going to disrupt their water line, that stop their water line. The only time it's going to stop is when we switch from the old line that she has that she says keeps breaking all the time to a new line that's done correctly to code. So we're trying to do everything that Town of Gilbert requires and do it well and be good neighbors.
Thank you, Jim. Council members, do you have any questions of either Jim or Gina?
Mayor, I do.
Thank you, Councilmember September.
So the question would be for Jim or Gina. So, if there is a city water supply in a neighborhood nearby that these folks can connect to and the school is offering to help to the amount of about $5,000 for each of these homes, what is the total cost? Is there an estimate of what it does cost to get the water to the new, to the new permanent location?
If you can hear me, am I unmuted? This is Gina.
Yes.
So between September 21st, when the first offer of $5,000 was presented, through September 23rd, I did, through many phone calls with the Town of Gilbert, find out that it would be fairly inexpensive. It's, as a resident, the permitting fees would be minimal. And because I already own the meter, just picking it up out of the meter box and putting it over into the new location, wouldn't be much of anything. And then the pipe running from my house to the location of the tap that the Cadiz Housing Development installed when they were putting in their water lines, it's about 100 feet. So, all in all, the $5,000 would, I believe, cover it if all the work was done as a resident. The, my, the value is not the question. It is, you know, ultimately, the actual work itself and the ownership of just making it happen. Like, I shouldn't have to be the one doing all of that. And I feel, I rightfully feel that they should be the ones setting that up and coordinating it and doing the work.
Thank you.
You know, the questions of the applicant. Not all. Close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion on possible motion. Anybody as confused as I am? Nancy Davidson, are you still out there?
I am, Mayor.
You are, Ashley. Could you answer my question? Are we in the middle of a property dispute trying to use the design review board to solve it?
Yes, unfortunately. And that's one thing I would bring up to the members of the Town Council, that scope of the appeal is not anything having to do with zoning, nothing to do with use permits or noise or hours of operation, nothing to do with easement rights. It's purely, did the applicant meet the requirements to justify approval of the design review case? case? So the design-related matters, and the town, you know, of course, in our opinion, and in the opinion of the design review board, they have. And with respect to the appeal itself, Ms. Lopez's appeal was actually focused on procedural issues related to the actual application, and whether proper signatures were included on the application, and all of the requirements of the land development code were met on those procedural issues. So some of the issues that were brought up tonight are similar, but they weren't necessarily included in the application for the appeal. So I don't know if that helps a little bit, but...
Thank you. Council? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, maybe I'll just comment first and tell you where I'm at on this right now. Certainly, we appreciate all of the families that have been here forever, and it reminds me, when I first moved back from Carolina to Mesa, we lived east of Valvistaon University. It was dirt. The university was dirt road all the way east, and then our street was dirt as well. But over time, all this development comes in, and lots of things change, and we lived on, you know, a beautiful acre lot with lots of citrus trees around and cotton fields, and all that certainly changed. The Barney family across the street started developing trailer parks, and that was the beginning of many beautiful Barney developments. But, you know, things change over time. I'm inclined to uphold the planning commission's recommendations on a couple of points, and let me just review those. Number one, there was a comment about it supposedly being a problem that schools have special privileges in zoning. I want to make sure that we understand what that is. The state law allows churches and schools to go into any zoning category, and some cities and towns like to pass ordinances that would prohibit schools and churches in certain zoning categories, and that's illegal per state law. And the reasons are very important for us to understand, is because the state of Arizona values the contribution of schools and churches very highly, and so that's why they get special privileges. And they can go into any zoning categories, because the state of Arizona wants the influence of religious organizations and entities, and they want the influence of educational facilities, whether they're public or private in this cases. So that's why you don't need a zoning change, that's why they get special privileges, because we want the positive influence of schools and churches, and that's statutory law, and I think that's a good law that we have. The second thing is, I see former councilmember Pressma still here with us tonight. You're hanging in there last, thank you. When I started to zero in on Gilbert politics, I still remember a question that he asked on a related case. He says, "Whose property rights are more important, yours or yours?" You know, which side of the issue had, whose property rights are more important? And I love the point that he was driving home, and that both people's property rights are equally important, and we should treat them equally in front of the eyes of the law and the town ordinances, and treat them fairly and equitably, and I think that's an important criteria in this matter. And I think staff has done a good job treating the parties here equitably, and evaluating the case and the matters and the facts before us, and the property rights and contracts and so forth. And so I'm inclined, on that basis also, to uphold the planning commission's recommendation as well. I would just add that I appreciate both of the individuals here. I don't know Jim specifically, but I know other people in the Gilbert Christian School community, like many of you do, and these are good people, they have good intentions, they serve our community well, they do well by their families and their communities. And being in the education industry, I know the value that this brings to neighborhoods, and I know Gilbert Christian Schools does a tremendous job and add a lot of value, and I think the argument about reducing property values, while there'll be some issues here with this water line to sort out, I think they've made a good faith effort to present reasonable options, some compensation to assist in resolving the matter. And so I think with those three points, again, I would be happy to move to uphold the recommendation of the planning commission. I think staff did a good job in working through the issues here, Mayor. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Other comments? The only comment I'd make is that the scope of the design review board and what they consider is pretty narrow, and we've been asked by an appeal of what their scope is on this property, which has nothing to do with zoning, and I'm like you, Councilman Taylor, I'm sympathetic with the other issues that have been brought up tonight, but they are not within the scope of the design review to resolve any of those issues, which confuses me, how we could even take an appeal of a design review when those are the issues that are being outlined, or issues that are beyond the scope of design review. So I tend to agree with you in upholding the commission's recommendation. Any others? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'm happy to, unless there's any other comments, I move to uphold the planning commission's approval of DRC 16-25B Gilbert Christian Schools' tightened solar field site plan as published in the documents before us.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. We'll move on to item number 32. I'll open the public hearing on item 32, Code of Gilbert. Conduct hearing and consider adoption of an ordinance amending the Code of Gilbert, Arizona, by adopting a new Division 7 and Article 7 offenses involving public health and sanitation. I believe that Nancy Davidson, this is another one that you were prepared to make a presentation to us about.
Hi, I did not prepare a presentation. I apologize, I didn't realize I was supposed to.
No, definitely.
Attorneys don't typically present or submit items for consideration, so I apologize, but I can give you a really quick summary. This ordinance is in response to the potential that the Smart and Safe Act may be voted by the voters. So in preparation of that, we've adopted an ordinance that is based on the model ordinance prepared by the League of Arizona Cities. And this ordinance was developed by a group of attorneys and just feedback from different attorneys across the state. And the purpose of the ordinance is to include the definitions. We also prohibit marijuana consumption on public property, to prohibit marijuana testing facilities, and as well to prohibit recreational marijuana establishments. But again, should the existing licensee in Gilbert, Cure Relief, which has been a great operator in Gilbert, should they decide to obtain a dual license, they would be, our interpretation of the Smart and Safe Act is that they would be exempt from that restriction. And that's the scope of the ordinance. There may be some changes that may be made down the line should the voters approved the act, perhaps related to building code modifications for, related to the non-retail portion, so for residential type of possession or storage or processing of marijuana, but that's not within the scope this evening. So we would recommend approval of that ordinance. And I believe there are many people who will be speaking on the item, so if you have any additional questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Nancy. Any questions from the council for Nancy? I have, I've received one request to speak card on this item. Lindsay Shube, if you'd come forward and state your name, place of residence, and we'll give you three minutes to speak on this.
I didn't do anything. Am I good? Mayor, who? I don't even have any electronics on me. I know.
What are you hiding?
That's better. Mayor Anderson, council, for your record, my name is Lindsay Shube, I'm with the law firm of Gamage and Burnham, 40 North Central in Phoenix, Arizona, 85002. I am here on behalf of Cure Relief. I see some familiar faces. I've been here a number of times for a number of different cases, but I also represent the only dispensary you guys have here in the jurisdictional boundary of Gilbert. We are here tonight to express our support of this resolution, specifically relating to the dual license facility. You know, want to make sure, we spoke to Nancy earlier today, and always have had a great relationship with the town of Gilbert. If we do become a dual license facility, just want to ensure that we can continue our great partnership with the town of Gilbert. And so any, our current and future operations, just as long as that is not impacted, as your only dispensary here, we are fully supportive of the ordinance that's in front of you tonight. Like I said, we've always operated in great compliance with the Arizona Department of Health Services, with the town of Gilbert. The town of Gilbert has always been a great partner, whether it's the planning department, the building department, police, fire, town council, planning commission, and your legal team here, and your city manager. So it's always a pleasure being here in the town of Gilbert and express our support, you know, just with the comfort that as a dual license facility, that we can still continue to operate in the manner that we have been over these years. With that, stand for questions for members of the council.
Questions? Council? Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you very much.
We do have a number of people that have signed up online. Are there some that, I don't know how many want to speak? We have that?
There are actually many registered, not quite that.
Great, okay.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
I just want to say for the record, yeah, 81 individuals did submit public comment cards. Of those, 78 were in, were actually against the item tonight, and three were for the item tonight. And we will make note in the minutes those individuals' names.
Thank you, Chevelli. If there are no other questions, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion. Council? Councilmember Tilke?
Mayor, thank you. Nancy, thank you so much for your work on this and turning this around so quickly. I was actually on the stakeholder group years and years ago when medical marijuana was coming forward, and we put in place what I thought was a very good ordinance at that time, and this builds upon it, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Just a couple of things on this. One is, I really appreciate the work that Chris and your team have done on this. I think the words are good. And like Kathy says, you know, it's something that's important that we have here. I want to make just two other points here. You know, some people wonder why a small government person like me would be supportive of this, right? Like, role of government should be small, right? But there is an important role that government has in certain things, like device industries. When you have something that plays on the weaknesses of individuals, especially our youth, the government absolutely has a role in that, and we see that in regulation of the gaming industry as an example, right? The government has a role to regulate certain things like the Securities and Exchange Commission, to make sure our markets are free and fair. So this is an important part of where the government does have a proper role, and I think that's expressed well in this particular ordinance, being proactive. We'll see what happens with voters on November 3rd with Prop 207. I'm encouraging everybody to vote no on that, because I just don't think that that's in the best interest of the public, and not ashamed to say that here. I've heard many times from our police department, you know, the issues that they're dealing with relative to this particular topic, and their opposition to this, and I stand with them on that, to continue to have Gilbert as a very clean, safe, and vibrant atmosphere like our former mayor used to talk about quite a bit. So I think this upholds that standard that we've worked so hard for, knowing that, with that, knowing that there may be some changes, and there may need to be some updates, and we certainly can't bind future councils, and we'll take those up as we come. But I think this is a good first step at this point in time, and so I'll be supportive of this tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? Yes, Vice Mayor.
I look at this subject from a transportation safety point of view. You know, that's very important to me, that road safety and people do not have accidents that result in injuries and deaths. So simply put, easier access to an impairing drug such as marijuana will almost certainly result in a higher number of those accidents. And it's important to note that while studies have contradicted each other in the long-term impact of recreational marijuana use, they've almost always shown a short-term increase in the damage of property and loss of life in the study areas where they already allow recreational use. I believe it will be detrimental to our town, and we'll be voting in order to prevent its passage, and therefore, I will be supporting this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Councilmember Yentes?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll just say ditto to my colleagues' comments, and just throw in that I'm hoping that our foresight and our other cities within Maricopa County's foresight proves unnecessary and that the voters on November 3rd resoundingly reject Prop 207. I'm not surprised that our regulated businesses currently in the medical field are supporting this. That's precisely the intention of how this 17-page initiative is written, to maximize their monopoly on medicinal and going forward on recreational, if the voters do approve it. So hopefully, voters will see the wisdom and the negative externalities that have been seen in other states, and take an opportunity to say, "This is definitely not right for Arizona." So supporting item 32 and opposing Prop 207, hope other voters do as well.
That's great. Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. I'll just mention that one of the, the only comments that I've received from a lot of people concerning the recreational use of marijuana is, "How can we pass up the revenue?" The revenue probably is going to cover some of the very issues that Vice Mayor and Councilmember Yentes have already discussed. And the other idea is, how can, Gilbert will be out on an island by themselves with this, but we know that many of the communities around us are doing the exact same thing that we're doing right now. So I feel we're in a safe place, and our primary responsibility up here is the health, safety, and welfare of our community. And I've seen too much evidence that going forward with what is suggested in Prop 207 could jeopardize that, and I would not be in favor of that in the community. So I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the attached ordinance posted under item 32 and in the public documents presented to each of us.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Thank you. That passes seven zero. Move on to administrative items. Item 33, a presentation, presentation and discussion on COVID-19 budget impacts. Kelly, I think you're doing this. I don't know if that mic's on. Is it on?
We'll test it.
There you go.
It sounds like it's good. There we go. All right, good evening. I'm very glad to be in person with you tonight and see some faces. It's nice to see you. We're doing a quick check-in. We're doing a quick check-in with our budget and the COVID impacts tonight. This is our October check-in, so we've got some updated data from when we last met in August. The first slide talks about the unemployment rate, and we've been very, very fortunate here in Gilbert that the unemployment rate that had spiked in the early months of the COVID epidemic has come back down. We're around, right around 4.5% right now. So a good trend there and new jobs in the area. The next slide, I wanted to highlight a restaurant and bar. This is one of our hardest-hit areas for Gilbert specifically. And so you can see that in the early part of the pandemic, March and April, our restaurants were experiencing quite a big drop from what their normal revenues were compared to the prior year. So 25% and 28% drop. Fabulous support from our community in rallying around the restaurants and really trying to reach out and support them. We had a 3% increase. Little bit of a slide there, I got data just earlier this afternoon, so hot off the press that August sales reported in September about a 2% decrease. So instead of negative 7, we're up to a negative 2. In comparison with some of our surrounding communities, they're closer to the 20% to 30% decrease. So it's still a decrease from prior years, but we're seeing a lot of strength in Gilbert's particular economy and in this area that's been hardest-hit for us, our restaurant area. On the next slide, we look at our utility payments. Just like when we met before, the blue line on that graph to the left represents the number of accounts that are delinquent, and then the pink shaded represents the total dollar amount. So we can see that there was a dip in the early August period, and that was some fantastic work from our utility billing department, paired with our meter department in getting door hangers out and really encouraging people to find help and get help on their utility bills. They continue to reach out to our residents, trying to show where that support is, and I think you'll get more information on that in a later presentation. So we are seeing, between April and September of 2019, so the same kind of time period, we had just under 1,900 accounts that were disconnected for non-payment. There may be some duplicate accounts in that number, same address disconnected multiple times. In comparison, we have not disconnected residents or any of the accounts since March 2020, and we have about 1,500 accounts that are eligible right now. So we're seeing some steadiness there. Overall, little bit of an incline since we spoke last, but definitely trying to get some help to those people who are in this situation. As we spoke and we adopted our budget, we put together the triggers. You've seen this slide before, that we based on sales tax, understanding that we didn't yet know what the impacts of COVID would look like, and we wanted to make sure that we had a chance to get that data before we made changes in the budget. So we had medium and large impact scenario items that added up to about $20 million in total across all of the funds that we've held to make sure that the data and the strength of our local economy shows that we can support the expenditure that we have planned for this fiscal, this current fiscal year. With that, the major triggers are based off of our sales tax, which is our largest area of revenue. This is a graph that shows you where that sales tax trend is. We did have one month where sales declined over private, over the prior year, and that was in April sales reported in May. That was really the heart of the impacts of COVID and a lot of those closures. Since that time, we've seen 7%, 9%, 11% increases. The data for current month that I just got this afternoon, so didn't have time to put it on this slide, is a 5% increase for the most recent month. So we continue to show a lot of strength in this area for Gilbert. When we compare that to the projections that we put together for our last check-in, we looked at two different scenarios, a very conservative projection for fiscal 21 and then kind of a worst-case projection for fiscal 21, which had the conservative projections, 0% growth. The worst-case scenario, we were looking at a 10% decline for this first part of the year. If we go to the next slide, we see that what we're actually experiencing is that 11% and 5% increase in our actual data, so well above what that conservative projection would be, and actually well above what our worst-case or any of the triggers that would be needed in our budget that we put into place. So really strong data for Gilbert. We know that sales tax isn't the only part of our budget, so a quick check-in on a couple of our other major revenue sources. We have our state shared sales tax. We budgeted about a 7% decline from what we experienced last year, just out of caution. What we're actually experiencing with the three, first three months of data is more than a 10% increase. So we're on track to be well above budget in this area as well. And then as we've checked in before with the state shared income tax, it's an even-dollar amount every month for 12 months, so we will definitely meet this revenue target as well. That brings us to the recommendation. With this data and information that we can now see for Gilbert, we would recommend beginning full use of the fiscal 21 budget and releasing those medium and large impact items. Continue to monitor the economic trends as we move forward, and continue to have those check-ins with council, the monthly emails that you get, and then the quarterly check-ins that we have here in the official council meetings on your quarterly basis. And then also begin building the fiscal 22 budget, again, using our very conservative methodology that we've used for years, which should put us in a good place to handle any additional changes that might happen over the next year. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Kelly? Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. So I had a question from a constituent today, and I said, hey, timely, we're going to get an update here. So his question was, you know, how things are going, and I said, well, we've heard, we've heard that we didn't have much of a drop. We're getting an update tonight, and he was really surprised that there wasn't much of a drop, given a number of small businesses that he's seen closed. And we've seen that, we've seen more vacant properties and things for lease as well. How do you address someone that points out the disconnect between what we're seeing on the street and, you know, these relatively positive numbers here?
Mayor Anderson, councilmember Taylor, that's definitely one of the weaknesses of the data that we have, is we see total sales, but we don't see where they spent the money. So if they're spending the money at some of the big-box locations that have a delivery service or a drive-through pickup service, we just see that money was spent there. So it's very likely that, and I expect that, that there's a shift in spending. Some places are getting less of the revenue compared to what they used to, other places are getting more and even bulking up on some of their jobs. So jobs shifting, money and spending shifting as well is definitely happening.
Mayor, maybe I can just, Kelly, thank you for that. You know, it's interesting times. Let me just make a couple of points. My recommendation is to still be very conservative, and here's two, two points to consider. Number one, when you look at the unemployment number, there's a margin of that that, to me, is a little bit fake. And let me tell you what I'm talking about on that. If you take the PPP donation to a business, they're effectively paying people to do things where they don't have work. So the unemployment number is, there's some solid employment and work in there, but there's lots of businesses that have slowed down, but their people are still on payroll, being funded by some of these loans which are going to run out. So that employment number, although it looks really good, and it's, I don't doubt that that's probably the number of people that are employed on W-2 payrolls, but how many of them actually have meaningful work, I think, is sort of the fake element that is going to be really interesting if we don't get another round of stimulus to support that. So that's a concern on the unemployment side. In terms of the sales tax revenue, that's also concerning, because when you see the $1,200 checks go out, you see the $1,200 sale on TVs, right? So there's a, there was a big consumer trend to use some of that money to do large-ticket item sales, and so I don't dispute that those are factually accurate, but what that trend is based on is something that, you know, if we're going to commit to the 82 positions, which is an ongoing step function increase in the budget on relatively shaky sales data, you know, largely driven by government stimulus, that is not going to be sustainable. To me, that should have a lot, we should have a lot of caution on unstable revenues with a step function in the expenses line item. And I think one of the good trends is, is there is credit card debt, councilmember Yentes asked that, that's actually coming down. There are people paying down a lot of debt, which is actually a very surprising trend in the U.S. and Arizona economy now, which is great. People are reducing their debt loads, but we still see some artificial numbers in the unemployment number due to PPP, and we also see some artificial sales tax revenues, or at least some very temporary ones, because it's really just driven by stimulus in many, many ways. So the only other point I'd make on this, Mayor, you know, we've talked about tourism quite a bit, and I think that's an important discussion, but I think one of the reasons why we haven't been hit so hard is because we haven't had a big tourism base. So that's good and bad, right? But this is a time when it's a good thing, that we didn't have a huge drop in tourism. So as we have that discussion going forward, we should probably not forget the lessons we're learning here about having a tourism industry that can, you know, survives, you know, some major hits like this. Mayor, thank you for the time to share a couple of thoughts here.
Thank you, councilmember Taylor. Other questions?
Mayor, if I may. Kelly, on the, and kind of dug, I lean in on what councilmember Taylor had talked about. The PPP funds, we got a strange echo here. Is that taken into account into the service industry? My understanding is that that's independence of the revenue streams that we were getting from, you talked about the hardest-hit areas of the restaurant and service industry there. That revenue stream does not reflect any, any money or unemployment from the employees that were getting PPP, but that's actually what they are doing. Is that correct? I mean, I may not be asking the question the right way. I think we're talking about PPP funds, but the hardest area, the hardest-hit area where people were actually laid off for a period of time is actually the area that we're seeing success and actually bouncing back.
Mayor, councilmembers, I'll try to answer, we'll see if I understand correctly. So yes, any of the stimulus texts, we don't necessarily know where it was spent, or if they've spent it in one lump sum early on, or if they're continuing to use that money that we're seeing in these numbers. One of the things that gives me comfort is that we're seeing high numbers above our projections and above last year for several months in a row. We only had one month that had a 1% decline. So that gives me some comfort in seeing a little bit of a longer-term trend there, as opposed to a single spike right around the time that stimulus checks would have come out. On the PPE and making sure that people still remain employed, that's good, because then they're able to keep more of their regular spending habits, their rent, their utilities, all of those things as part of regular life. And we'll see if those businesses are able to maintain that employment in the area, or if with a lack of stimulus, they may not be able to. One of the other comforting things is that with the data that shows from sales tax, which is our major revenue source, we're on track to be closer to 108 to 110 million dollars. Our budget is 97. So even if we do see some decline in that data over the next half of a year, next eight months, we have cushion built into that, that we haven't included that as our ongoing money. It would be one-time money for the upcoming year. So we, yet, we will again have some more time to evaluate the ongoing impact of that as we build the fiscal 22 budget and keep conservative on what we put into ongoing expenses.
Okay, and I'll try to do a better, a better ask here on the data. The PPP funds or the stimulus money that we received in no way is counted into the revenue for those businesses that you identified, particularly the restaurant and service industries?
Right, the money that we, that Gilbert received, we don't have any of that built into there, no.
Okay, and they don't account for it in any way, so that's actually real revenue for real sales that they're doing, independent of the money that they receive for stimulus. Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you, Kelly. Great job. And I know that, Patrick, you talked about we were going to, this is our check-in, the major one here in October, but I'm assuming that, I agree with councilmember Taylor, let's be conservative and cautious going forward. Let's keep checking in so that we know where we're at if things start to change from where we're at right now.
Yeah, Mayor Anderson, members of the council, yes, we are tracking everything on a monthly basis and some items even more frequently than monthly, excuse me, to monitor activity in our community. I've got Kyle that gives me a weekly report for development activity. I had him pull March to September of last year and contrast that to March of September of this year, and we still are very lucky. We are above 2019 in both categories, commercial and residential activity within our community. So we're watching things very closely. If anything new should happen that should impact our revenue streams, we will take immediate action to protect the town's resources, to protect our revenues, and make sure we navigate our way through this smartly and safely.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. Item 34, presentation update to the council on utility billing delinquencies. We have a presentation on this from staff?
Yes, Mayor, councilmembers, this is Hakan Johansson.
Hi, Hakan.
I have just a brief update to walk you through. Let me get this started and share my screen. Set up on your end yet?
Yes.
Perfect. Again, brief update on where we stand with utility accounts. Kelly gave a little summary in her presentation just now, but I'm going to talk you through a little bit more in detail of what's going on, some of the background on our delinquent utility accounts as a result of COVID. What is that current impact to Gilbert? We'll go just a little deeper. We'll also take a look at how that impacts affecting other communities and then what their plans are with a recommendation to council in any direction or discussion that might come from this. So again, on March 10th was the last day that Gilbert disconnected water service for non-payment and stopped assessing late fees. We began tracking those accounts that were delinquent or becoming delinquent throughout the summer and throughout the pandemic. We have made periodic changes to our disconnect notices, to our emails and outbound phone calls, and we've always provided information on community resources available for those that needed utility billing assistance. In August, we did work, the utility billing team, along with Meter Services, visited residents, making contact whenever possible and leaving door hangers. Part of this was to ensure that someone hadn't moved out and the account wasn't closed, because we didn't, we didn't make contact or other similar types of circumstances. This month, we've been working directly with Ascend to contact those in greatest need and encouraging them to apply and providing the application and information on that directly. Some definitions quickly again. A bill is considered current up to 21 days after the billing date. It's considered past due and eligible for late fees 22 days to 44 days after that billing date. It is eligible for disconnect 45 days to 79 days after, and then it is eligible to be sent to collections after 79 days, although typically we do a few more communication and then send to collections around day 120. This is that same chart that you just saw from Kelly. We did get some new information just today that's not on here, but as you can see, we've, we currently have, this chart shows just 1,400, 1,500 delinquent accounts with a total amount delinquent collectively of about $330,000. And that just shows you how that's trended over time. And you can see effectively that push that we made in August did make a difference, and we expect to also see that as we have additional funds from Ascend and other partners. This is a chart from AZ Central. They gathered some information from early September, so the data is slightly older, but it does give a good city-by-the-city look. This was published on September 19th. And so this is a list of the utility accounts delinquent by most of the major cities in the metro area. I'll pause it just for a moment. At this time, again, when the data was collected in early September, there were about 1,100 accounts delinquent in Gilbert. Moving on to the amounts past due, again, Gilbert in great shape here on a total. Some other communities struggling or being impacted more heavily, but many of those communities are also much larger, and so we're in And so we're in, trying to find a better way to look at this on an apples-to-apples. We took numbers from the 2018 census of the households for each community, and we created ratios. And so what you see on this chart is the number of delinquent accounts per 1,000 households. And so for Gilbert, that would be 19 delinquent accounts per 1,000 households and probably just about $4,000 owed per 1,000 households in Gilbert to help you understand how to read this chart. And again, I'll leave that up just a little bit. But it does change the data a bit when, when scope and scale of each community is taken into account. So what are other cities doing? Apache Junction is reviewing this next week to possibly restart disconnects, but that is not determined. They did have a water rate increase on October 1st. Mesa did resume disconnects on October 6th, and they never stopped putting late fees on. They do have a number of different utilities, and it's a different process in that city. But as you can see, a majority of the other communities around us either have no specific date, or they have selected January 1st as their date chosen to resume normal operations. And I'll come back to this if there are any questions for discussion later. So what's the proposal from staff? In September, council approved additional funding to provide direct assistance to Gilbert utility customers. In October, we begin to start notifications that late fees are anticipated to resume in November with disconnects resuming in January. November, again, beginning the $5 late fees and providing flexibility in repayment plans. December, continue assessing late fees for non-payment, if not on an agreed repayment plan by that time. And then in January, continuing normal operations. And that is, that is my presentation. Leslie Giltner and her team have been instrumental in administering it and gathering a ton of very helpful information.
Thank you, Hakan. Any questions from the council? Well, thank you for the presentation.
Happy to do it.
Move on to item 36, council, administer council acceptance of invitation to become the sponsoring town for the new USS Arizona. I do, I know we do want to go forward with this. But just in case there are any questions, Les Presnick has given us a card that he can certainly come and answer if we have any questions on this item. Thanks, Les. Thanks for staying here. I know you'd rather be home asleep, wouldn't you? Is there any, are there any questions or discussion on this item?
Mayor, I'd just like to start on this. First, I want to say that this is my favorite month. Not only is it the Navy's birthday, it's my birthday month as well. Today, light clockwork, I got a text this morning from one of my, my Marine friends who's a Silver Star, no kidding war hero with three Purple Hearts that always says, "Simpify sailor and happy birthday." So it just kind of keeps me motivated here. This month also is the, the 140th year since the commissioning of the battleship Arizona. And I found that kind of interesting that we are celebrating our centennial. It's almost as if the battleship Arizona and Gilbert grew up together, which, which makes sense because I believe that the ship and the town shares very much the same values. Nikki Stratton came to town just a few weeks ago and gave a presentation and, and was extremely moved by the generosity of the town, the kindness, the Gilbert kindness that she had heard about, and just thoroughly impressed with, with what the town had to offer. What a lot of people in this room didn't see was the results of that visit on social media and how it had gone through. She's a member of Go Gilbert and actually an active member of Go Gilbert. But more importantly, she pulled in state and national attention to the town of Gilbert and was able to start generating the enthusiasm and excitement for something like this. This is a unique opportunity, I believe, for Gilbert because we're not asking for anything. We're not asking for money. We're not asking for land. And we're barely asking for anything more than for the town to give its good name and reputation and values and link it up with the service and the name and the values of the most iconic worship in our nation's history. I believe that this is a win for Gilbert. It's a win for our state, and it's a win for our country. So I will be obviously supporting this. I, I ask that the council support, join me in supporting this with the unanimous vote. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to, for the town of Gilbert to accept Nikki Stratton's offer to become the sponsor town for the USS Arizona.
Second. It's been moved in second, and please vote. That motion passes 7-0. Thank you for all your work on that, Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 37, any reports from boards, commissions, or committee assignments? Yes, Councilmember Tilke.
Thank you. I was appointed to the Sister Cities Board as liaison for the town, and they asked me to just announce that because of COVID this year, we couldn't send any students. And so the four students that were picked for this year are now being considered to go to Newton Abbey. So three students will go to Newton Abbey, hopefully, next summer. And the final fourth student is going into the military, and Sister Cities will be giving him a scholarship for that. And so they're going to be moving forward, hopefully. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. There are no policy items. Communications report from the town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. First, I want to congratulate Chevelli on her appointment at the town clerk position. We look forward to working with her in her new capacity. Next, I want to thank our Parks and Rec team, CIP team, contractors and designers who worked on Phase 1B of Gilbert Regional Park, which opens this week. We've got a lot of exciting events that we have announced over the coming weeks to herald the opening of that new park. And also for our council, many of you have joined, joined us since the inception of that effort, which began almost six years ago with the negotiations with Maricopa County to obtain the rights to the flood control basin at Chandler Heights for a 100-year period of time, which then allowed us to sell some excess parkland we had, which we asked the voters to give us permission to do, which they granted. It was a very complicated process in selling the land. And we had some key staff members, Mary Goodman and Calamiras in particular, that facilitated with that, which then provided funding for us to develop the first phases of Desert Sky and Phases 1A and Phase 1B of Gilbert Regional Park without issuing any additional debt to the taxpayers of Gilbert. So it's been quite a journey. I know the elements of the park that have been open to date have been thoroughly enjoyed by the residents. And we look forward to this final portion of the first phase of that park development opening this week to the residents of Gilbert. Also wanted to thank, we recognized members of our police, courts, and prosecuting attorney for domestic violence awareness month in October. And I can't thank enough the great work that occurs every day in our police department with our detectives, with our counselors who work with these individuals, work with these families impacted by domestic violence. And they're very specialized and very good at what they do. And it's a terrible thing for anybody to have to endure. We also, our new town attorney has created a very specialized unit within the prosecuting attorney's office to specialize in prosecuting and handling domestic violence issues within our, our office. And our court has created a domestic violence docket so that we create some specialization on the judicial bench so that we can, again, administer justice, but also help heal families and heal individuals and cure what is just a terrible aspect of society and occurs within Gilbert as well. So I thank all of them for their efforts. It is hard work, and it is heartbreaking work at times. And then lastly, not to cater to one particular vice mayor's interests, but you may be curious to know that we have now activated our 214th traffic signal in Gilbert, Arizona. This community that we think is a very small town is a very big town. And we now have 214 active traffic signals in Gilbert. And this one has been turned on at Higley and Queen Creek for the entrance to our new Gilbert Regional Park.
Be careful, she's getting excited.
That's all I have tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any report from the council on current events?
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to speak.
Yes, Councilmember Spence.
And I thank you in advance for giving me the latitude to, to talk this evening. March 17th, I was appointed to serve a nine-month term as council member. In conjunction with this appointment, I opted to run for a two-year seat in the August special election. I was a newcomer to politics. I am just a Bill, a kid that grew up in Tempe, made a career out of serving my country in the Navy. Nevertheless, I poured my heart into running a clean campaign that focused on service to the community. It's old news that I was narrowly defeated. While I received nearly 25,000 votes, my opponent received 26,000. Most will say that I lost. However, I consider it to be an incredible victory. My opponent's a career politician. He had name recognition and the support of a well-organized political network. He spent a staggering amount of money, around $6, to my one. Polling predicted I'd be handed a humiliating loss and that I would only receive 7% of the vote. I actually received close to 49%. There are many takeaways from this experience, but the main one is messaging matters. Tens of thousands of residents chose to support my message, and I'm humbled and thank you all for your support. My opponent has since filed a lawsuit against me and the town of Gilbert. And while he has filed an appeal, a judge has ruled that he is entitled to be seated November 3rd. In accordance with this ruling and barring any ruling made by the Arizona Court of Appeal, I consider my term to end at 11:59 PM November 2nd. Let me be very clear. At no time have I ever stated or inferred that I would disregard the ruling of a court having jurisdictional authority over this case. This has been clearly stated to legal counsel and all members of the town council, and any suggestion to the contrary would be absolutely false. Therefore, this will be my last meeting as a member of the council for now. And with the theme of messaging matters, I feel it's imperative to say a few things as a sitting council member. I have been an advocate for our first responders from day one. I will never, ever consider defunding our police department. I will always fight to ensure that our police, fire, and ambulance service are properly trained and equipped to safely do their jobs while providing the standard of service demanded by our residents of Gilbert. Simply stating support for our first responders doesn't matter. Actions, not words, matter. A recent news story was published that shows that the town of Gilbert has spent over $700,000 on protest-related expenses. God knows that I am a staunch supporter of our First and Second Amendment. However, I emphatically denounce white supremacy and racial intolerance. I denounce discrimination in all form against persons' sex, ethnicity, sexual or religious preference, and political ideology. I'm a gun owner, and I carry a Houghton. However, I believe that armed individuals dressed in camouflage and carrying a Confederate flag are promoting a message of hatred and intolerance. These tactics are intended to intimidate and invoke fear and only serve as a disgusting reminder of one of the darkest times in American history. Furthermore, while I support freedom of speech and expression, I will never, ever support the burning of our American flag. I mention discrimination based on political ideology. We are more divided than we have ever been. Our society, more than others, and some more than others, have embraced behavior that infringes upon our right to have our own political opinion. Those who know the details of my political experience are astonished by the brazen, unethical, and even illegal actions that were taken against me. My situation is not unique. In fact, it seems to become the new norm for some in our elections. From all that I will say tonight, these are the words from the residents that I want everyone to hear. I am afraid. I'm afraid to put up a yard sign. I'm afraid to comment on a social media post. I'm afraid to get involved. I'm afraid to run for office. We, as a society, are failing to preserve and protect the basic freedoms that we should be afforded, that should be afforded to us all. We should be able to live in our community and be involved without fear of physical threats, harassment of our families, vandalism, and other forms of bullying and intimidation. Despite the challenges of my race, I am still standing. Proof positive that righteousness and selfless service will always prevail. Free thought and free will are assured both biblically and constitutionally. To the residents of Gilbert, demand accountability and affiliate yourself with people that encourage you to think rather than dictating what to think. Elect those that have proven themselves to be a servant leader through action, not words. Get involved without fear. There are people that will help you succeed. I want to acknowledge my girlfriend, my friends, my family, my supporters that have stood by me. I attempted to shield them from the ugliness of the campaign. However unnecessary, they are not afraid to stand up to bullies and bully tactics. I've been truly blessed to serve the town that I love. Some did have, some say that I have accomplished more in seven months than some would do in seven years. However, I'm just one in a team of over 1,000 people who are truly committed to serving for the right reasons. In my first meeting with Jordan Ray prior to being appointed, I stated, "At the end of the day, it comes down to making decisions to the best of my ability and that I can stand before myself, my family, and my God with the decisions that I make." Apparently, that may not always be the case with all politicians. And that's a joke, by the way. With all the things that we have accomplished during my time on council, I'm most proud of the fact that I never compromised my honesty and integrity. I stayed true to myself and never once chose ideology over serving in the best interest of the people of Gilbert. Some know that I pray for the same thing before every meeting. I pray for wisdom, courage, and strength. Wisdom to make the best possible decision, courage to communicate my decisions, and even change my mind when appropriate. And the strength to stand by and defend the decisions that I know in my heart are in the best interest of our town, even when challenged. To my friends and colleagues on the dais, I will continue to say this prayer for you. To the staff, I have never in my life encountered a team that's more committed to a mission than you. It has been an absolute privilege working alongside you. And to the residents of Gilbert, I did my very best to serve you. Thank you to the tens of thousands of you to put your trust in me, in us, to lead our town through one of the most challenging times in our lives. I will always cherish this experience. Mayor and council, thank you for your friendship, your patience, and support. It's been my honor working with you. Thank you, Mayor, and I encourage comments and encourage comments and invite comments from council. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's been an honor serving with you. And thank you for your service, not only to the country, but the service to this community that you've taken the time to, to be involved. And my advice to you is finish strong in, in doing the work that we're doing right now. So thank you again for your service. Yes, Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Spence, thank you for your service. We appreciate your contributions and, and input on so many things. Mayor, under this item of council communications, I wanted to address just two quick things. Just continuing what our town manager talked about with the park, the next phase opening, I wanted to mention, looking forward to that. Looking forward to joining. Last time, I had a conflict when the first part was open. So I'm really sad about that, but looking forward to tomorrow. It's been interesting to hear who's taking credit for the work of this park and how it's come, come about. But as the town manager rightly pointed out, he and his team, he doesn't take as much credit as he probably deserves. But there were a few small miracles that he pulled out with his team to get this deal done. And he never really takes credit. The people who don't deserve it take the credit, but he and his team don't. And they actually deserve a lot. They did a lot of heavy lifting with the county. When the county came back and says, "Well, we want a million dollars." You remember that? Like, nice try, you know? And the deal that Patrick and his team negotiated was just outstanding for, for now and for 100 years in the future. And really look forward to that. Of course, Mayor John Lewis did an outstanding job as well with the relationships with the county. And then also, someone who never takes credit and worked behind the scenes to support this is, was, at the time, Supervisor Denny Barney. He'll never take credit for it, but behind the scenes, he made things happen. And he gave the air cover to Patrick and his team to do the technical work to make that happen. So I wanted to make sure that the people that really did the work get the credit, or at least a little bit of... at least a little bit of recognition on it because I think that's important. It'll be fun, and I hope we can recognize some of them as well tomorrow at that opening. I know our names are going to be on it for a long time, but some of these unsung heroes that are not either on council or on the plaque definitely need to have our thanks. The second thing is, I also wanted to express thanks to our police department for the excellent way that they're handling the protests around the town. Many are peaceful, some are not, but they're doing just an outstanding job. So Patrick, if you could just share that with the police. I know, and as Councilmember Spence identified, it's been a tremendous cost, and of course, that's the value that we place on the First Amendment. But I hope as we see that wane, hopefully it will be soon, then we can start to pull back some of the expenses with all the extensive barricading and overtime costs, and hopefully those will come down to the levels commensurate to the activity as well. But just wanted to publicly express my thanks and appreciation to Chief Solberg and his updates and his team, and Patrick, your leadership there. So if you would pass that along for myself, I can't speak for everybody, but I'm sure the sentiments are widely shared here. So thank you, Mayor Anderson, and thank you, town manager.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember September.
I just want to say, Bill, it was a pleasure working with you. Thank you for your service here on the council. I also want to thank you for all of your hard work and for bringing your vision of bringing the USS Arizona home and for helping to get us to that vote tonight so that we can be the sponsoring town for the new USS Arizona, SS N-803 submarine, and all of your tireless efforts, your leadership with the Veterans and Military Advisory Board. Good to miss you.
The only other report I would add on the mayor's current events is we do, in addition to tomorrow night and being out at the park, I'd encourage you to be out there if you can, but also on Thursday morning, we do have the annual mayor's Face Summit, which will be held Thursday. This year, we'll be doing it virtual instead of everyone present. That begins at 9:00 AM Thursday morning, and if you want more details on that, please access, I believe, on the website, you can learn more about that, but we'd encourage you to attend that summit. We have some important topics to discuss with our faith leaders. There's nothing else? We need to recess to, recess the meeting at this point and reconvene as an executive session. They're moving a second?
I'll move.
They're a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.[1771.23]